All right, first on our list is public comment, that would be Scott Noreen with Purple Wave Auction. Come on up, sir, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to appreciate the opportunity for us to speak to the commission today. Wanted to introduce you to an opportunity for you to work with a company that would help you sell your surplus. If you're familiar with Purple Wave at all, but we're a national online auction platform that works with government agencies to help them sell their surplus heavy equipment, truck, trailer, vehicles, that kind of thing, heavy duty trucks as well. And we're based out of Kansas, but we have an emerging, growing footprint here in the state of Alabama. In fact, I live in Birmingham. My partner, Nick Pacino here, lives in Jacksonville, Alabama, so we're Alabamians. And like I said, I don't know if you're familiar with Purple Wave, we have, our process is straight, simple, sold. That's our motto. And I know I've worked with government agencies for over six years now, helping them sell their surplus. And I understand that most of the time, selling your surplus is not a high priority necessarily, but recouping those tax dollars back to the county is a high priority. So what we try to do is make sure that we have a straight, simple, sold process. It makes it very streamlined, puts you in a position where you're not putting a lot of time and effort and money into the process itself, and we kind of do everything for you. So the difference that we pride ourselves in, that we are a full-service company that will help you with the process, who do everything from having a field operations specialist come out onsite. And we sell everything where it sits, by the way. We don't require you to move your equipment or transport it or go through that time, effort, and expense to ship it to any kind of yard. We sell it where it sits on your property. And we have a field operations specialist that comes out once you sign a contract with us on one or two or more assets, whatever you're looking to sell, maybe a package you're looking to sell. We have a field operations specialist that comes out, they're equipment experts, both in heavy equipment and in heavy duty trucks. And they take all the videos, all the photographs. They know exactly what they're supposed to be taking photos of and posting on the auction page. And the goal is to make sure that we have a consistent look on every single auction page, that we're putting as much information as we can through the data capture process on every asset. That way, when our bidders, which is our job is getting bidders to your auction, when they come to it online, they know exactly what they're looking for, and they also know what they're looking at, and they have minimal questions for the seller. And that's really the goal, because if you're getting fewer questions, that's, you know, the fewer the better. Our fee schedule's, you know, very, very simple. We have a 10% virus premium, and that is it. So it doesn't cost the county anything to sell anything on our platform. We collect bidder payments on your behalf as well. Our auctions run about four to five weeks. As I said, we collect bidder payments on your behalf. We hold them in escrow until the asset's been picked up. And I think our secret sauce, if you will, is we do a tremendous job of marketing your asset. There are 98 other territory sales managers like myself out there promoting your asset and other assets around the country. And our job is to look at it from a bidder's perspective, once we list it for you, making sure we're driving as many bidders as we can to the auction page. And what that does, it creates a more competitive environment, which drives a greater hammer price. And we also do title transfers as well, if you're selling any asset that may be titled. But we feel like we have a true differentiation out there in the marketplace, particularly since you're not, you know, we don't require you to move your assets to a yard, like a lot of our government agencies do here in the state of Alabama. So, by the way, I didn't want this to be a presentation of a discussion. If you have any questions at all, please, please let me know.
Do you have a reserve? If we put a reserve on it, no sales, is there a fee?
Well, we're a no-reserve platform, okay? So what we do, though, the reason we do that is we max out the number of bidders that we get to the auction because of the no-reserve. If you look at it from a bidder perspective, you'd much rather be bidding on an asset that has no reserve on the auction than have maybe a blind reserve. And so because of that, we drive more quality bidders to our auction platform than any other auction platform out there.
You're talking to a bidder.
Pardon me?
I said, you're talking to a bidder. I do it every week.
Yeah, okay, so you understand.
On other sides, I get emails from yours, because I've clicked on some of your links.
Yeah.
So...
Now, from a...
We have a piece of equipment, say we've got a skid steer we want to sell. And we want, say, eighteen thousand to be our selling price, and it doesn't bring that. So it sells regardless.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's an absolute option. But what we do on the front end for it, what we can do from the front end is do a valuation for you, what we call it a heavy worth. And we look at recent comps, similar assets, several hours, miles, et cetera, and not just in the last three years, but recently, and not just on our platform, but on other auction platforms as well, so we can provide you a range of what we think your asset would go for based on our platform, based on our marketing analysis and comps. And we'd want to make sure you have a comfort level.
Are you looking at just sales comps, or are you coming out and evaluating the equipment?
And... Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. Well, part of doing the heavy worth evaluation is coming out and taking photographs, doing measurements, making sure, and we have an entire analysis team that handles those. But we would want to make sure you have a comfort level with that.
The same thing as a buyer like me in reverse. I buy and do the same exact thing you do. I check what they've been selling for. I check the comps on them, the hours, you know, the wear and tear. And mostly, I do that by visual of what's posted. That's one thing, I like what you said, all the pictures and videos. Very seldom do I ever go to Iowa or Illinois and look at the machine I'm bidding on, so...
Correct.
It's helpful. But from a seller's standpoint, the no-reserve is not attractive. That's not attractive, because we sold one truck recently that brought more than we thought it was going to bring. And we had sold some that didn't bring what we thought they were going to bring. So at that point, you know, we didn't get the opportunity to no-sell with your company if it'd been with Purple Wave.
Right.
Yeah, there's a couple of options. Can I...
Absolutely.
Sure.
So, most of the time, unreserved, I've been doing this 20 years, unreserved gets you the highest. It just does, because what Scott said, buyers trust it. When you're bidding, like you, if you're a bidder and you suspect that the owner's able to bid on it, or there's a no-sale, or anything else like that, it stops people from bidding at a certain point. If a tree is bidding, or there's a house number, you just don't trust it. Now, with that said, we understand that particularly governments and some of their high-value assets, that might be a different story. You've got five dump trucks that you're looking to get rid of, and you're trying to turn them every single year. You're talking over a million dollars' worth of equipment. Purple Wave does guarantees as well on those, on packages like that.
Okay, that makes a difference.
That makes a big difference. And here's what's nice about Purple Wave. And I used to work for a company that provided guarantees and things like that to not just counties, but to contractors too. Most other platforms start off with a gross guarantee, where they'll say, you've got a million dollars, and then they'll start backing out all of the commissions and everything else like that. Purple Wave gives you a net guarantee. So if we think, if we evaluate the package, we think it's a million dollars, we're going to give you a million dollars, period. It's that simple. And if it goes over a million dollars, most other platforms will start splitting the proceeds, usually somewhere around 75, 20. If you're shaking your head, you've probably done some of these type of transactions before. Purple Wave does 3%, that's it, no matter what it sells for.
3% of the total price, or 3% of that over the guarantee price?
It's 3%. So we'll build in the 3%. We're guaranteeing you the million dollars, to keep it simple. But so once it gets over a million dollars, we want our buyer's fee, which would be 10%. So it'll go to a million one, and then after that, you get everything other than 3%. Does that make sense? Because we still want our buyer's fee. But if it doesn't get a million dollars, say it gets $950,000, you still get a million, we lose $50,000.
Wait a minute, buyer's fees usually add it on the end to the total at the end of the auction.
Correct, that's correct.
You're saying you're going...
They're going to buy it.
If you're guaranteeing...
So if it sells...
No, okay, I misunderstood something. But what I was looking at, if you're guaranteeing a million, and a five-piece of equipment brings a million four hundred thousand, you're going to take the buyer's fee out of the four hundred thousand, and you're going to add it on top of the...
No, so...
Takes it out of the million.
There you go.
Okay, that's one way to figure on that.
Yeah, that's right.
Then the 3%...
And then we get our 10% on everything, so all the way up. But you're going to pay a 3% premium for that. Most other auction companies, they're going to charge you 25% over the million. We're charging you 3%.
3% of the difference over the million dollars.
That's right, that's right.
That you guarantee.
Over the guarantee. That's correct.
All right.
That's right.
Just say, go back to the skid steer.
Yep.
$50,000, your guy comes out, evaluates it. You're guaranteeing that's we're going to get $50,000.
Nope, not on one. We're not going to do it on one.
On a package.
On a package.
But on...
It's only on packages.
We'll look at a pack. Now, I mean, how many times you have one skid steer sell? I mean, usually there's...
You're looking at small counties. We sold a single dump truck.
Well, okay, well, I mean...
That's what we're looking at that way.
It might be a little bit of a coin flip there. But you'll have to get a little comfortable with what we do. I mean, we're proud to announce that we just signed up our first county in Alabama, which was Heinz County.
That's Alabama.
Or...
Georgia.
No, it's Heinz County, Mississippi, I'm sorry.
I meant Mississippi.
Yes, Heinz County, Mississippi, and in the southeast, under my direction, under my umbrella.
We're Mississippi.
It's been a long day. It's been a long week. I've been in three states. I live in Alabama, it's just been a long week. But Heinz County was the first one in my district that signed up, so...
Anybody else got any other questions?
Oh, I don't know, are you OPUS-enabled too? A lot of the counties are on OMNI or OPUS, they call it OPUS. If you are, you...
What is that?
That's a government RFP type of...
Like group purchasing organization.
Oh.
Yeah, it's like a national RFP.
We have a, what's it called, where we buy equipment off state bid, but it's not...
That's sor...
No, that's different.
Sorswell.
Sorswell.
Yeah, Sorswell, okay, yeah, Sorswell is, Sorswell and OMNI are, they're the same kind of thing. But you don't have to be on that. We've got an umbrella agreement, and I'll leave you all copies of what the umbrella agreement looks like for, you know, single assets and things like that.
Well, it's definitely something to think of, but like I said, most buyers are strangers.
Well, call us, we'll take a look. We'll be happy to take a look, and maybe for the first couple, I'll talk them into doing a guarantee for you.
That was my next question, you're negotiable on that.
Yeah, we'll...
Package deal I'm talking about.
Nice thing about us, Scott, myself, we're not commission-based people. If we got, if I got good news, I'll tell you. If I got bad news, I'll tell you. And if I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know. I mean, that's what's nice about Purple Wave. And you've got to stop making fun of me, you make me nervous.
Well, you mentioned something a minute ago about going on a contract.
Yes, sir. No, it's an agree, it's an agreement. It's really not even a contract. We call it an umbrella agreement, and I'll, like I said, I'll pass them out to all of you, so you can take a look at it. It's simple, two pages.
That's too many pages.
What's that, too many?
That is one page.
Well, it would be on front and back, but I couldn't print it on front and back, so there you go. But hey, the last company I worked for was 32, so it's much more, much more simple.
And because we're single, you don't think that 3% will remain?
Now, that's on a guarantee only. That's on a guarantee only, so...
I listen well.
If you don't do a guarantee, then it's zero.
Have you had any luck visiting any of the counties?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we're talking to several of them. Yep, in fact, we're going to be in Montgomery next week.
So you've got some equipment to sell for Montgomery.
Yep, they've got over 100, they've got over 100 pieces.
Well, they got a package.
They're not doing a guarantee on that one, so...
All right, any other questions for us?
Thank you.
You are quite welcome. Let me hand these out to you, that way you can just...
Take a look at them.
Alan Williams, turn your mic on.
Oh, bone you that does that.
We'll get him to not be in here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If y'all got any questions, you give us a call anytime.
We'll do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff. Hey, you was on the back row, missed you.
Good afternoon, Lady and Jill. How y'all tonight?
Good, how are you?
All right. Oh, tonight I'll be asking for a resolution to hire Christian Smith as a full-time corrections officer. Be asking for Caleb Webster as a part-time correction officer. Reclassification of James Dickens as a full-time patrol sergeant. And I'll be asking for a resolution to the chairman to sign for, so we can apply for the VAWA grant, for that domestic violence thing that we've already got, just reapplying for it.
All right. Any questions, Sheriff? All right, thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Okay, Commission Office, Ms. Sylvia.
Next Tuesday night, I'll be asking for a resolution to advertise to hold a public hearing for Donald Dollar General Store in Marbury.
Can I make a comment on it before you go any further?
Sure.
This is a Marbury route. Chilton County has Marbury routes, Billingsley routes, Calera routes.
Montevalle routes.
Montevalle routes. We have routes from everywhere else.
Randolph routes.
Randolph, oh. So if anybody's questioning what this is, we're not authorizing to sell liquor in Autaga County.
No.
It's Chilton County.
But we could if asked, I guess.
Hey, we get tax money off of... Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Also, in your packets, there were pay increases and reclassifications for the Commission Office for the 25, 26 year, and that's been budgeted. The reserves transferred, requested for 2025, per our policies, those amounts were listed in there. We had passed the policy, and then we, these numbers were based on 2025.
Okay.
And these go into, these go into our long-term investments.
Any questions on that? Okado.
The, of course, we've revisited this before, but there's another date on our new meeting schedule. April 27th is actually a holiday, and we'd like to change that to April 23rd, which I think is a Thursday.
And I apologize to y'all, because I went through this with Ms. Sylvia, and I missed it, so it's not on her.
What is a holiday?
Confederate.
It's a state holiday.
It's a state, because it's not on this.
There's no telling. We had no doubt it was not her fault.
It's Miss Sylvia Day.
Yes, right, it's one I made up. And you voted on it.
All right, let's move on.
Next. The next item is to, at the meeting, to open nominations for the Chilton County Cemetery Rehabilitation Authority. There has, there is already a list of willing participants, if we would like to nominate them.
I think Derek, I got to call him, he was going to go through the list and make sure... Oh, there he is.
I was going to say.
I didn't see you come in, Derek, I apologize. So if you have any names, we'll entertain them tomorrow night that would like to be on there. Yeah, I meant Tuesday night. Golly, sorry, people.
She has my list, and I didn't know what about Mr. Ellison, if she wanted to direct her or just be involved.
Uh, he would like to be involved, and I think might be one of the members.
She has my list.
Okay. All right.
Are we going to put a number on that?
It was five.
She has five unless you want to rewrite it.
What would you like, Derek?
Come on, come up, please, Derek.
What would you like?
Let me, this is Derek Scott, our Chilton County historian.
I guess it was written for five because I was hoping we'd get five. So if we can get seven, I mean, I'm okay with that. But, you know, the resolution that was passed two, three weeks ago was for five.
Yeah.
I mean, we can change it if...
I don't know why we couldn't amend that tomorrow night, make it seven.
If that's what you prefer, do we have seven?
Um, we definitely, yeah, we can come up with seven if Mr. Ellison wants to be on that, make it easy.
Yeah, he called me, and I thought I gave him your number, so he could contact you.
He didn't call, but he sent me his name, but I didn't know if I should call him.
Well, you call him, and if you have seven, we'll amend it tomorrow night and make it seven.
I know if I was heading up a...
Cemetery.
I wanted any hands pulling the wagon.
The more, the merrier, that's for sure.
Like I said, get them before they change their mind.
Make a resolution from five to fifteen, and you can stop.
Oh, just...
I already left them on, because I didn't have any point, I guess.
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, anybody can be a member, this is for the director.
Yeah, this is a group that makes sense.
So, whatever number you want, if you want to leave it at five, we'll leave it at five. If you want to expand it to seven, we'll amend it and make it seven.
Let me talk to Mr. Ellison, if he wants to be a director, or will be, then we can make it seven.
Okay.
Because I have at least one more that I had on my list that I struck off.
Okay.
So that'd be seven.
All right. Thank you, Derek.
The next item is to pay an Everbridge claim. There was a problem getting the purchase order put in, so it was not on the claims list. And that needs to be added for 11-160-33.
And that was Everbridge?
Everbridge, yes, needs to be added to the claims list.
All right.
And that's all I have for the Commission Office.
Okay, Ms. Libby Ratliff, our litter control agent, how you doing?
I'm good.
All right.
I'm here to ask for a resolution on a pay raise for 25, effective October 11th. And I don't have nothing else.
We'll keep doing...
But I know y'all do for me.
I, we're good, but you clean up anything we call you, but I don't have anything.
Libby, I was told yesterday that what y'all did out there on County Road 13...
13.
Is working wonderfully, and the residents are very appreciative, and I appreciate that.
Okay, we're going to change two of those signs that's double. I know they're paper, but I'm waiting for some to come in. Tim's getting me some to put the "Smile, You're on Camera" thing. It takes a little while.
They're very, very happy, thank you.
Okay.
Those signs actually are working? Good.
Yeah, they stayed on the poles.
So far.
Well, that's because...
Because they're on camera.
It's because, that's right, what else you did out there.
Yeah.
We're going, tomorrow, we're going to go and pick up some couches off of 155 for just a little bit. Won't be there long, but they're laying there, they're at the edge of the road, the people going by clipping them. So if you hear that a county truck, we're going to be off the road, but we're going to get them off of the road.
That's fine.
Have you got hip, you still got hip, okay?
Yeah, you see me, I pick up, I do it all the time. I mean, I do it all the time. I mean, I'm not going to drive past it, and I work out that truck, the truck rolls.
I don't drive past it, but I just thought, well, I guess she's working all day right by herself. I stay on the side of the road all day.
I promise she had it somewhere, but she's out there doing it.
That might not be real safe for women on the side of the road working out.
Been doing it for 20 years. And that truck, I mean, think about it, Joe, I mean, but some of the people that I get through courts, I don't trust putting in a truck with me. But now, if I feel like, as I'm working through the day with them and I can trust them, yeah, I'll put them in the truck and we'll go. But if I don't feel like I can trust them or don't know them, I don't put them in the truck with me. And I don't move people around a whole lot, because it's on their gas, their time. So they just walk straight down the road, because they're trying to consume 20 bags in a day, if that's what a judge, you know, gives them. Some's got 100 bags, some's got 700 bags. It all depends on what he gives them to pick up. But like, they'll start on the road, and if they work and get 20 bags, that's what it takes in a day, is 20 bags. So if they get that, you kind of don't want to bump them around, because you want to see an improvement in that one road. The more you move, you don't see improvements. But now, if y'all see a different way, or some way we've done it before, and it might work different this time, we'll try it. Try anything anybody's got, or make it work.
I think what you do is working marvelous.
But if you do hear that I'm on 155, it's because of the couches, and...
Safety issues.
I'll beg for forgiveness later, I'm going, we're going to go to 31.
Forgiveness for what? We don't care where you pick up.
But I mean, it's just, it's a lot, and you can't leave it, because it's sucking it out into the highway.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So we don't leave it.
Oh, get it.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Libby. Okay, Parks and Rec, Donald Jobs.
I'm just asking for a resolution for a new hire, Ashley Byrd, is a full-time caretaker. Add the payroll effective October 15th, that the pay rate shown on attachment. Also, another new hire, John D. Childress, is a full-time caretaker. Add on payroll effective October 15th, that the pay rate shown on attachment.
I think you got to remove that from consent on that particular one.
Either that, or I won't be able to vote on consent.
Okay, you want to do that. Just let the office know.
Pull it and put it in the regular agenda.
Yes.
He's the first cousin.
We verified Alan knows way too many people.
Put it two different resolutions.
And nor if they plan, he can do it.
And then the last thing I got, this wage adjustments for the Parks and Rec Department, effective October 11th, that the pay rate's shown on attachments.
All right, any questions?
So you'll have two resolutions tomorrow night?
Uh, this will be in a consent agenda.
One, two, you'll have one. Have one.
Yeah. Is that going to be under me, is the rest of them are, that hire? Yeah, just put it under there, because that's where it normally goes. We trade out. All right, thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
All right, transit.
He's not here.
You got... Who's got it? Have you got anything?
No one, nobody told me I was with him, but nobody told me he wasn't with me.
Okay. He had a conflict to come up, so I told him I'd be happy to do this. There's a request for a reclassification on Jacob Davenport as a full-time transit dispatcher effective October 11th. There's a request for a new hire, Virginia Patterson, is a full-time transit operator too. Add her to the payroll October 15th, that the pay rate's shown. Remove Jeff Minor from payroll effective October 2nd. And then the Title VI documents, which I'm sure all of you read, asking that they be signed by the chairman and submitted to ALDOT.
Okay. I thought we'd already removed Jeff Minor. We didn't do that when he went to the road department? Didn't anyone went to the road department? Okay, maybe I got the wrong name. Jeff, that's not the one we hired out there to drive, no, I'm sorry, I got the wrong name. My mistake. All right.
That's all.
Any questions on that? All right, Animal Control, Christina.
Good evening. I have a request for a new hire for Victoria Colp as a full-time animal care supervisor, effective October 15th. A new hire, Ashley Phillips, is a full-time animal care specialist, effective October 15th. A Nakoma Sweeney as a full-time animal care specialist, effective October 15th. And Chelsea Cook as a part-time adoptions counselor, effective October 15th. And then a reclassification of Anna Brooks, from the current animal care supervisor to the full-time assistant director, and wage adjustments for this year.
All right, anyone have a question? Thank you, ma'am. Road Department, engineer Heath Sexton.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd first start off with requesting a new hire, David Sherlock, for full-time to the position, and effective date and wage is shown on the attachments. Also, Mr. Justin Arnold, new hire, as the, to the position, effective date, and wage is shown on the attachments. And also, we completed our end-of-the-year evaluations... And also, uh, we completed our, um, our end of the year evaluations and based on the evaluations, I have attached, uh, uh, FY twenty-six positions, reclassifications and step increases. Um, and I believe these would become effective October eighteenth. I think the meeting's on Tuesday, fourteenth. Okay, so it'd be after the meeting. So, uh, talked to Terry Hinton and we're gonna do the eighteenth to be when it comes effective.
Okay.
Um, and just project updates. Projects are going well. Uh, still gotta talk to the contractor about ensuring we get the, uh, permanent stripe on forty-nine and twenty-three. Uh, we did have that one issue on six thirty-three where the, um, they were placing contractors for the, uh, was placing fiber optic cable up underneath, uh, six thirty-three and it came up a little, a little, uh, came up too early and kind of buckled the road. So we're working with Wiregrass to get a quote to repair that. But other than that, all's, all's good. Um, if we meet on Tuesday, I have a ballgame Tuesday. I was gonna ask if, uh, there's no reason for me to be here if I could just miss the, miss Tuesday meeting?
Oh, sixteen, I came, sixteen, we're gonna have a super highway out there, fellas. I went down today.
A lady.
I'm sorry. You're one of the boys. Sorry, sorry, Commissioner. Uh, I came out of Antioch Church, went back toward fifteen. That, that road is gonna be, we're gonna, I think we're gonna be happy and everybody out there is gonna be happy about sixteen when it's finished. It's gonna be good.
Yeah, there was a lot of good, there was a lot of good feedback at the ballgame the other day about that.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody's tickled, said get it started. They just say, quit making me do tour.
That's great. It's a good time to be working, perfect time to be working.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Few weeks ago, you and I ran into each other and asked you to check on the Roe Bridge being closed north of, uh, North Chilton County. Hmm? Did you ever check on it?
I did. Um, talked to Matt Epperson and Matt Edwards and, and Terry Memms and they said that bridge was, uh, uh, actually came up in a lawsuit many years ago and it was settled by court. That it is not a county maintained, uh, road.
Really? Huh. Well, the road comes up to it each way.
Well, they assured me that it had been taken to court and, uh, so if I try to find that settlement information, if you'd like.
What road, what road number was that?
Uh, I had it written down, uh.
You got it on your photos.
Yeah.
It's, it's up, uh, North Chilton's area and I think it comes out on one fifty-five, doesn't it? Cut, it's a cut through there.
It usually has been a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and the fire department, they have to come out and go around a long ways to get back to, it would call it's on the other side of the bridge from where they are. That's why they called me about it. And said, there's nothing closed but the bridge. The road is open. Now, I haven't been to, if you can find that photo, shoot it back to me. I wish I'd texted to you then I'd have it.
If you'd like, I'll try to find the court information too that they settled for it something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be good. You can't get away to a fire.
I had it on my phone and he took a picture of it and evidently I've erased it off my phone. Which is, I do commonly on things. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eve. Okay, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Billingsby.
No, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Bone had to work tonight. He had detail. He'll have detail again Tuesday night, so he'll send his apologies. Uh, Commissioner Childress?
None.
Commissioner Hall?
No, I have a comment, but he, behind Roger.
Oh, okay.
Road, so.
All right, uh, Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Ed, I'm sorry. Okay, Commissioner Perkins?
My turn, ready. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of things I wanna, uh, I have some updates. And, um, one of them is, if you remember back, it's been several months now that we had applied for a Kewahco grant, um, through the Parks and Recs Department. And, uh, our, uh, grant writer, Ms. uh, Stollman, called me and let me know that we have been awarded this grant. Uh, with the Kewahco grant will be awarded to us in the amount of ten thousand dollars and it is to build a community archery park at Manuka Park. Um, she has affectionately named this on the grant as Bullseye at Manuka, which I didn't put a name on the grant, so she just made one up. Uh, but we're, we're kind of excited about this, to be honest with you. If you've, uh, traveled in several areas, I know the state of Alabama has twelve of these scattered across the state in some state parks. Uh, Watumpka actually has one of their own, uh, and we're gonna get one of our own. Uh, it consists of three, uh, target youth range from five to twenty yards, a seven-target adult range goes out from twenty to fifty yards with each, each of, its yardage marker has its own station, and a three-D competition walking trail for, for that. So that will be built at, uh, Manuka. We can get, um, we got about eighteen months to complete it, but I don't think it's gonna take us that long. We don't, we don't sit on a whole lot of stuff around here, so. Um, that was a pretty big, pretty big deal and, um.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
So, a lot of, a lot of people that, uh, are in that, uh, in that industry are pretty excited about that possibility and, and we're gonna see that be able to come to fruition. The, uh, other, uh, item is, uh, several months ago where we had the, um, we went out and, and tried to attract some national events to the county. Uh, and we had, um, signed that contract for a, um, a top-tier level, uh, bass tournament event. We are, we are pleased to announce that we can now announce the tournament trail and the dates. It will be the, um, National Professional Fishing League will be here, um, on May twenty-first through the twenty-third of twenty twenty-six. The event, the first event, if you remember, we have a three-year contract, so we can rotate these. The first event will be on Lay Lake, launching out of Beazwax Park. And the daily weigh-ins will be at the Clanton City Park. These, uh, it's a week-long event, has three official practice days, one community action day, and three tournament days. And this, this particular organization, they are one of the top three in the, in the world. Uh, they will showcase a hundred and twenty of the top professional fishermen in the country. Uh, with the expectation that it will generate over three thousand visitor days to the county with one point one million in revenue being generated. Um, it is an extremely great event to, uh, be able to get here, uh, with them being in the top three, you know, organization, professional organizations in that, in the fishing industry. Um, we expect to attract visitors from around twenty-five different states to the county. Having said that, because of the willingness of this commission to be able to, uh, uh, go after these events, the word kinda got out. I've been contacted by several. And, um, just in a nutshell, on the, on the back of these type of announcements, um, prior to that, you'll notice we got the Women's World Bass Tour coming in March of twenty twenty-six to Mitchell. We've been able to secure the, um, uh, two of the Fishers of Men Division events to come to the county to be housed and hosted by, in the county. Um, uh, not at our expense, but out of volunteer expense, um, from different places. Um, those will be fished on, uh, Lay Lake and Mitchell. And then we also had an announcement today where there's one BFL qualifier gonna be on Mitchell next year, along with, they chose Mitchell in October next year for their two-day division championship. And that's on top of some others that, that go on. So, um, just to let y'all know, I appreciate y'all's support, uh, the county's support. This is, it's a big revenue generator. Everybody, even people that do not, are not in the fishing industry or don't, don't even go to our parks will benefit out of the increased revenue that these, these things bring in. So it's a, it's a big deal. And not only are we not just going after fishing events, uh, we've been in talks with, uh, some tennis tournaments, um, disc golf tournaments. We, we want, we want the county to be open for business for tourism to, to come here, so I do, I do thank y'all. But, uh, that, uh, press release ran last week when they announced their, their announcement and, um, and so forth. And that's on, on the updates that I have. That's all the updates I have. And then I have a request.
If you don't mind, Commissioner Perkins?
Sure.
Uh, I want to tell you from my standpoint, I probably speak for most everybody up here, we appreciate your effort. People's always said fishing don't pay, but knowing fishing and knowing what you know, you've done yeoman's work in bringing, how many tournaments?
I said, one, two, yes, about seven now.
About seven tournaments and that's gonna be quite a better tax revenue for this county.
Isn't it something like two point three, did you say, two point three?
The NBFL, if you run some of the numbers from other counties, that they do it by questionnaire where the anglers fill out the questionnaire and turn in their, their sheets on, on their expenses and, and all that, so forth and so on. The NBFL has a hundred and twenty anglers and they average three point three travelers with them per angler. Plus, we expect about two thousand, three thousand people maybe at weigh-in to come to the city park to watch weigh-in. Uh, these are the upper, uh, I mean, it's the upper echelon of, of, of anglers. They'll, they'll attract a lot of visitors. They'll be here, not only will they be here that week, um, thirty-seven percent of them, uh, do pre-fish. So they'll be here up to four to five days prior to the lake being off limits to, to study the water and do these kind of things. So it turns in from eight days to, to, in excess of that. Like I said, that, that week, we should be able to generate about three thousand, uh, travel days into the county. So we're looking at, um, if you run off the average like Saginaw Bay and all that, we expect a one point one million dollar, uh, revenue boost. And that typically comes with a, uh, times three multiplier for the year. Um, just because of the attraction of it being on TV and other bass clubs seeing these type of events and wanting to come to fish where the pros are, families wanna come here. There is a, there is a number that cannot be, cannot be obtained, you know, that, that you're gonna see a bump off of, so.
Well, the, the publicity, the, uh, just the word about it happening here in Chilton County, in Lake Mitchell and Lay Lake, is gonna get people thinking about the county that might not even think about coming here.
Right.
And what, the, one of the points I was gonna make, this commission has chosen to invest money, and we consider it investment in both parks, that is gonna make both of them self-sustaining. And it's well on its way to doing that. And I, I say again, I commend Commissioners Perkins and Bone for the work they have done to upgrade both of them. Thank you, sir.
We thank you. Um, the last item on the agenda is, uh, last, I guess it was last commission meeting where we changed the speed limit on County Road three fifty? From, um, I guess on that, on that week, it was from seventy-six to the Little River?
Yeah.
All right. There's been several requests.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, I'm sorry. Well, I got seventy-six on my brain. So from thirty-seven, approximately one mile to the Little River materials, it's been, uh, brought to our attention, uh, through some video and some, huh, some other things, especially at the, uh, function we did at Manuka. I know me and, uh, Commissioner, uh, Hall, uh, was talked to by the same, uh, group of, uh, citizens. And their, their request is pretty much that we extend that speed limit for one mile on the other side also.
One mile, okay.
Yeah, so here's, here's.
It'd actually be like two miles?
Well, it go, here's what they're, here's what this is. Speed limit to be extended south on County Road three fifty, approximately one mile to the intersection of County Road thirty-four. Where thirty-four intersects.
Down at the bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, west. West.
Well, it wouldn't be west. The road, road number in.
Odd numbers.
Well, I guess, well, that's right, it is west. Well, let's go west then. Let's go west, young man.
That's what fishermen don't know, road numbers.
I don't know. I ain't got a GPS to look at. At, at, at least I ain't get lost.
Yeah. Ms. Hall, I know he said you were.
Yeah, Ms. Hall wants to comment on this thing.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Comment on it, here I go with these, getting lost in these woods at night, uh, on. County Road three fifty, I ended up on eighty-two.
But then you leave where you were.
Yeah, by the grace of God. And it was dark, it was.
Probably had all kind of cell coverage in there, she didn't you? Goodwill ain't was Halloween.
Well, I mean, the car went so fast that I could not get a picture on that road. And so I do agree. So I went, I sat to go down there from, I went from seventy-six, which I have a complaint on seventy-six, that was turned in. So I was on seventy-six and then I went to, um, past Little Seadrink Church, well, any, right, to get to that road, three fifty. So these roads are something else, but the traffic, just because I'm lost, the traffic was so bad, people just whoof, whoof, whoof. And I'm like, where, where am I? So the thing of it is, is can we get more governance on, on all these roads, these county roads, these dirt roads? These are dirt roads. And, um, my car went in black and came out red. Oh, so.
We don't charge for that.
I know it.
Until you back up a seventy mile an hour, you're staying right back to.
There's a severance tag on that, dude.
Okay, so first of all, seventy-six, on seventy-six, that is going, this side of seventy-six, not on the, uh, racetrack side. So behind the trade school side, seventy-six Morning Star Church.
Oh, yeah.
And then that road, John is gone, so he's trying to help me, so there's, traffic, oh, okay, what's this road going to the old train school?
That's, uh.
I didn't write it down.
Samaria, Samaria, nine.
I need a map.
Old, old.
He talking about the dirt road he cuts across.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Uh-uh, no, that's not nine, no.
Talking about dirt road or clay road?
Nine is Kenton Road, nine is Kenton.
Yeah, and it turned, and it goes by the old trade school, I mean, uh, yeah.
It's just a lot of roads.
Hey.
Branches on.
Just ask.
Libby, Libby knows.
Hey, yeah, we got an expert sitting here.
Okay, Libby, it's the one from seventy-six is a dirt road go to the old. Okay, but it's an international speedway also.
International speedway.
Okay, so, um, on the ca- on the dirt roads.
How did you get from?
Don't ask that, do not ask that.
Don't start that.
Go, please. And I'm by myself.
Okay, I, I.
But GPS is.
I did not ask that question.
GPS would do that to you. So anyway. Hatley, will you please help me?
I'm lost, I don't know what's up.
We just need.
You, are you where I was raised and you've lost me already?
I know, I know where the dirt roads you're talking about is.
I know Morning Star Church.
I know where that's at.
So you're talking about the dirt road that comes off of Morning Star Church Road, I knew it, Ed. I can't remember the road number, but it cuts through and comes all the way up nine.
Yeah.
Libby said, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I know where you are now.
Okay, there's a lot of high-speed traffic there and the, our residents complained on that road. And, um, it's very high-speed traffic. You agree, don't you? I mean.
You don't have the dirt road now.
We just have to get with y'all, we have to get with sheriff and let him see if he can.
You put the speed limit signs up there. He can go out there tomorrow, he can put you up, put speed limit signs from one end to the other. If it's not enforced, putting the signs up there is one thing.
Yeah.
We're out there picking up that trash and when they come by us, she's absolutely right, they're climbing. And this man can go out there and put a hundred signs up, but if it's not enforced, what have you done? You know, uh.
That's the thing, we don't have enough deputies.
That's what I want to ask. Can we get more patrol in these areas? Because men, I mean, you, you all drive a little bit different, but women and children, school buses, that's my concern, safety. So safety first.
You can, you can do that.
Okay.
But we don't have enough deputies. And they're, what they're gonna do, 'cause I've seen them, while they're there, yeah, they're running slow. Once first, once the word gets around, but when he's gone, they're right back to the speed.
You know what happens most of the time? When they go out there and set up, uh, them folks that was complaining about the people driving faster.
Ones that get caught.
That's the ones that get caught.
Yep, he's right.
Well, I just want.
Ninety percent of the time.
I just want us to, uh, focus on, uh, a be- somewhat a better solution because it's just an accident waiting to happen. And if you all out there working, they're not even respecting you guys. So I know, and my vehicle's pretty big, it had it rocking. So I just wanted to bring that, the, the same roads, but, you know, I was really down, you know, lost and, but it's, it's, it's very serious. As a commission, if we can ask John, he's gone, if they can just do a little extra patrol, I know there's not enough, um.
Yeah, and he's al- he's always been helpful on that.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned because when a citizen brings it to my attention and I witnessed it firsthand, I couldn't even get my phone out quick enough to try to take a picture. I showed the dust to Roger.
Yeah. Picture dust.
Well. Commissioner Bone has family down there. It's probably one of his family members.
I see the coyote and ru- and roadrunner out there.
Yeah, but, uh, I didn't know that road existed, but it's serious, you know, the, the people are very concerned and, yeah. I just want the, the commission to support us, to support John, see if we can get a little bit more patrolling and then, um.
I got a question for Heath. I know. I know we or the, as a county or somebody, we've got some of these portable signs that tells you your speed limit and it's got the speed limit underneath it.
That's sheriff.
That's a sheriff.
Yeah, sheriffs.
Okay. Do those signs have cameras on them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we do have one that has.
They do.
Okay.
Why not take a picture of them?
Mail them a ticket.
Send them a ticket.
Mail them a ticket.
Man, they do in South Alabama.
On county roads?
We gotta have, we gotta have res- I think we got a resolution.
Well, I know that, but we gotta have a resolution, but can we get that tip?
You send them a nice letter.
Yeah. I ain't voting for resolution, 'cause I'll be the one getting ticket.
Well.
And.
Then they do it in South Alabama. And I don't know, glow monk in monk gun.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one of those down in Louisiana.
You know, that, that's the, that's an age-old question. How you gonna stop? You're not gonna stop it.
So we're.
You can put all the speed limit sign, and I totally agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Hall. That it's a safety thing, but it's been going on. I drove the bus down that road and they blew down that road back in nineteen seventy-two.
Oh, Lord.
You were driving a bus in seventy.
We're going on, we're going on.
And County Road, and County Road three thirty-six.
Yeah.
Three thirty-six.
No, wait a minute, three thirty-six?
Yes, that's a complaint of speed too. That's down by Alpine. Gulf eighty-two, Alpine Church. It's a big shop on the right, turn left.
Yeah, yeah.
Three thirty-six.
Yeah.
I've been, there's a road.
You've been on the road. You in the dark? You better stay off that road in the dark.
I am.
There's one of them dead end down there. There's a booger down at the end though. Okay. All right.
Hey, thank you all.
Anything else, Commissioner Perkins or Commissioner Hall?
The roads.
I'm good.
Okay.
I can save my time.
Okay, uh, all right. Uh, we were asked to look into closing of three eighty-seven and right now we, we've got some of the findings. We don't have all of them, so that's the only update on that tonight. Uh, I'll be asking for resolution to, uh, for allow me to sign a proclamation for Farm City Week, uh, tomorrow night. And I have a, I have been trying for months to find someone to take our engraved marble down and hopefully move it to a prominent place in the new courthouse. So Commissioner Childress and met with me and Nick today. Uh, let's see, let me find my email so I can give you exactly. He put everything on here but his proper company name. Oh, there it is, it's very bottom. Masonry Arts does this for a living, it's all they do. And he quoted, we have eight panels up there that are engraved with the history of the county. And he quoted eleven thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars to take them down and move them to the new courthouse. But it didn't say anything about, uh, installing. So I'm gonna call him tomorrow and ask him if he left it out or if there's another charge to install. Because, uh, anything we do at the new courthouse will be a change order and that usually is very expensive. And of course, like I said in the text I sent everybody, if this is agreed on by the commission, it'll have to go to the PVA and, and Brassville and Gory, uh, and a price quote. Then we'll have to vote on a change order. So, uh, this is just the first step in it. So, just updating y'all on that.
I might add that, um, the panel, panel doesn't describe what we're moving up there. That, what is that, about seven feet?
It's a forty-six inch by eighty, I think it's eighty-three inch, two inch thick, eight hundred pound panel of marble.
Yeah, with engraving, so it takes a specialty company to be able to get those off the wall without breaking them and transport them without breaking them and so that's, I know that's expensive, but.
He looked at them today and also he said that, that he did not think they were adhered to the wall in such a way that they couldn't get them down, but he, they do not guarantee breakage. So, I mean, no, I mean, what he's saying is he may, they, if they break one, it's on us. So, I mean, they, we'll be paying them to do the whole job if they break one. So, I'll be talking, I'll be getting more, more definite definitive information tomorrow before we have any kind of contract we gonna sign. But I just gonna tell you, there may be a possibility we can take some history out of this building to our new courthouse. All right, anybody got anything else? All minds satisfied? Y'all have a good evening. We'll see y'all Tuesday night at six thirty.